On the word... Join me in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seeing no clergy?
Not even close to the earth. We're going to have to pick up the last name now.
Everybody gave you a look though.
No, somebody was waiting.
Public input at this time?
I will come forward on that. My name is Gail and I'm Vice President of Advancement at Bethany College and I come to you in capacity tonight because we just recently celebrated Thanksgiving and it seems appropriate to share thanks in a community way for the nearly, a little over 400 alums of Bethany College that live in the community of Lindesworth, for Smoke to Valley Community Foundation making gifts most recently to us to do some education outreach opportunities with the Messiah Festival of the Arts in 2015, specifically around transportation, allowing elementary and middle school students to participate in education outreach. The last two years, we've seen over 700 students each of the last few years and we look to continue to grow that as we move forward. The Lindesworth Arts Council recently made gifts to enable a real men's same workshop that will be held Thursday of this week on campus that will have over 300 young men in grades five through 12 participating there. I'd invite all of you to come Sunday at four o'clock to Presser Hall to start your Advent season at yule time at the college and it also give direction to if you're not aware, as I was not earlier today, and have become aware and now the college is participating in Giving Tuesday. It's a national movement that in the close of Thanksgiving and our materialism of Black Friday and today, Side of Monday, to celebrate what we really do and that is to give back and to participate in the Year of Tuesday. So I thank you for being leaders of this community, for what that means to us, the college, what that means to so many that are part of our community that interact and truly give back. Thank you.
Thank you. Any others of which your eyes have public input? Seeing none, amend us to the agenda. I know that there are two that I don't know where of, under truth and parks, item number three, instead of other, will lead Sidewalk, AmeriPrize Sidewalk. Item number four, our debt changes. Downtown Infrastructure Committee.
So, what was the other item?
Sidewalk. Debt.
Debt, oh. Here is the number two, Sidewalk later and then there's the number three.
I've lost control of that. Three minutes.
Your honor is Reverend Bunny. Set the tone of the night.
Let's say number three is Sidewalk if you were passed out the Downtown Infrastructure Committee minutes. Please refer to those. Item number one is actually number three?
I just said.
It's not perfect. I apologize. Way out of word here. Any other changes that could be handled swiftly? All right, Councilman...
I'll explain it another time.
Councilman Betty is not sure yet. Item number three has to do with the AmeriPrize Sidewalk changes, the change to the Downtown Infrastructure Project. And item number four comes from the committee minutes themselves and item number seven of the committee minutes, there are three areas, B, C, and D, which take council action to bring those into the desire to do those or not do those based on committee recommendations from last year. Any other changes to the, amend us to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to that in five. Approval amendments from November 3rd council meeting and then November 14th council, special council meeting. If I hear a motion?
Could be approved.
Move to the second, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye. Thank you very much. On my, I don't have a lot of my mayor's report, I'll highlight some of the December meetings. This coming Friday is the city Christmas dinner, please be aware of that, council members and committee members in the community that responded, we appreciate their efforts as a way for us to get back to them and show our appreciation for the work they do for our community. Keep in mind Tuesday, December 30th, the hearing council meeting, which is required to get our sales tax transfers and other things in line at that point. Weekend activity?
Just remember that that December 30th meeting is at 7:00 a.m., not E.G.
And I'm sure we'll have several reminders of that before then, but thank you for bringing that to our attention, that that is 7:00 a.m., David. Keep that in mind.
All right then.
Weekend events going forward on Saturday?
Are we going to try to set up meeting for personnel?
I was looking at that on this agenda and I don't see one until I was next on my list, but...
Chris passed out.
Correct. I'll ask.
I don't have a date yet though.
Do you want to look at our calendars today?
Should we go to the party?
Or me?
I was just trying to keep up with the...
By the way, we do want to welcome our students in the back that are here to see how everyone works. You said it's fine to be here today and then be a part of that, so... Do you want to send a date today? Councilman Martin, I'm going to try and buy one in the future. We're all together here, let's look at our calendars. These are for department heads, I'm sorry, council, committee, chairperson.
I need to have those evaluations back on the 12th. And the hearing is on the 30th. We, shoot for some, I guess sometime the following week?
Eighteenth? Eighteenth, about eight in asking?
Sixteenth and eighteenth, you have committee meetings at 6:30 a.m. and 7:00 a.m.
For the following week, one or two sitting?
If possible, I'd like to see if we could do it. I'm leaving on the eighteenth and I'd like to be a part of that, so...
If we're back to the seventeenth? Councilman Martin?
I think that'll, that'll work for me.
In the evening?
Essentially is.
Have a meeting at eight so that we can be at 6:30 or 7:00 whatever.
Emile, you would not, these are department chairs, are you correct?
That's correct. Personally, I'll, I'll see that.
Maybe members are the department chair, but the committee chair.
You're off with us.
Becky, will that work for you? If we're done, be it 7:00 or 6:30, be done by eight?
Yeah.
About 6:30?
A.M.
A.M.
About seventeen.
David? Aye. Betty?
What's, what's the date again, Bill?
Seventeenth. We also have on...
Please make sure and have all those two be on the twelfth, so I can pick them up and get everything compiled and as I'd like to have 100% participation from all council and their...
Graves reminded me here of a strategic plan follow-up work session from 6:00 to 8:30. Should be already on the calendars for December 15th, Mondays?
What is that, Bill?
Strategic plan, follow-up work session, just to finalize.
And what date is?
That is Monday, the fifteenth, at 6:00 p.m. We'll have a light meal, should be done at the very latest, 8:30 p.m. You should start on six, six. Six.
Okay. Monday, the fifteenth?
Correct.
Okay, I heard sixteenth, I'm sorry.
Sixteenth and eighteenth are committee, it's going to be a city week. We alternated though between evening and day and morning meetings, so...
Can we find something to do on it?
We weren't here on schedules in between that, so...
And the follow-up is the fifteenth?
The fifteenth from 6:00 to 8:30 in the evening, p.m. All right. On the fifteenth, the sixteenth is committee meetings in the morning at 6:30 a.m. Seventeenth Personnel Committee at 6:30 a.m. Eighteenth is committees at 6:30 a.m. I'll give you Friday off. Any questions on all those changes or meetings for the month? It would be a good time to thank you all for your time, if you put it into the city. Please, please remember to come on Friday and we'll have a great meal for you at the Sunford Door. Having no others? Planning on going anywhere?
There were four of us.
Well, we'll move on to committee reports, let's start with Administration and Finance.
The first item is the management intern job description. I'll have a chance to look at that. The recommendation had a committee that we approved, this has to be stayed here. That is motion that we approve this job.
So second?
If it moved to second, Greg will have...
I was trying to jump in before it was seconded. If it could be amended to, if we can, if I can add language to that description that says this is a nine to a 12-month position, the reason being is from a benefit standpoint, it makes it a temporary position and not a regular permanent full-time position.
Does the maker in the second understand the amendment that's switched for?
I do.
Nine to 12 months?
Eleven to...
You're...
Add my motion or you want to?
That's amended.
Whichever you prefer.
Just add it in.
Yes.
Second, are you okay with that?
No. Yes, I am.
Keep in mind, so... Everybody understands and hopefully you guys had an opportunity to read the job description, the law of the amendment that was just added.
Further discussion? How soon do you anticipate advertising this? I mean, just perhaps immediately?
It will go out to universities in January, January, yes.
Just can you run the case?
I'll probably sentence it, K-State in four days, by having gotten any response from either one at this point in time.
So the shot was in J-Lox, that responded?
Mm-hmm.
Great. All right. Do we need roll call on this? Because there is a...
Do you need the roll call?
We're not doing it. Good plan, roll call please.
Okay, Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emile?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
All right, the next item is audit proposals of the 2015, well, only 14, 15, and 16. Audit years, we had three companies, six companies. By, as we have suggested that the return with David O'Dell, who has been doing the auditorium, that is a motion that we contracted him to.
A motion, is there a second?
Second.
Motion and second, further discussion? David, further discussion on the item proposal?
I guess the sole reason was to, I mean, just stay with somebody that we've worked with for years, because I noticed one was a little bit less, but... What was the discussion or...
Discussion was similarity. One of the problems that we've had in casting is the kindness of getting the audit done and we were assured it will be done by June 30. And that was...
I think we'll need to amend your motion again, for an amount?
And, and, David O'Dell, what is it, sixteen thousand, what is it?
Sixteen thousand eight hundred.
Sixteen thousand eight hundred.
Second or mine, second, we've amended that motion to include the amount of sixteen thousand eight hundred?
Additionally, the recommendation to stay with David O'Dell's was that in Larry Follow-up with references and speaking with other finance directors for, who, directly who had the lowest amount, didn't have very strong references for the quality of their work. From that standpoint, from a government audit standpoint, and additionally to, because of the variation in cost was not significant, changing auditor is significant because you're having to basically transfer all of your records to a whole nother auditing for bringing them up to speed in year one. After they get the initial year done, it's not a problem, but it's a major disruption of our regular normal functions to bring in a new auditor when the amount is not significantly different. We would probably eat that up in staff support time.
All right, thank you. Any further discussion? On our proposal, hearing none, roll call please.
Becky?
Yes.
Emile?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
The next item is insurance brokerage services proposals. We received back two to the party that we sent out. This is a motion to go with a two-point roofed typer insurance, formerly as multi-story insurance with an office here in Linsburg. That is a motion, second?
We have a motion and a second, does that include any kind of dollar figure that we needed to include?
That would.
Has it got a dollar figure?
Not at this time. The fee will be the commission on the insurance. Then at that point, our insurance actually isn't due for renewal till April.
Is their commission the same exact amount?
In year one, yes. But, kind of go back a little bit in history, typically, more historically we had bid insurance in the insurance package. The problem we run into is there are very few companies that provide municipal coverage in the state of Kansas. So whatever insurance broker was first to EMC, which writes probably the majority of municipal coverage in the state of Kansas, that's who got the quote, that's who got the business, because then they won't point it to anybody else. So instead of going out for insurance, we go out for insurance brokerage services to evaluate not only what we did from an insurance standpoint, but also in terms of support from the broker themselves, because we had had some issues in the past where we'd have some claims and basically we would have to channel it all through ourselves without a lack of support. Also, this provides the opportunity for a level of competition that we didn't have when we were just quoting insurance services or insurance coverage. And that's how we got to asking for an RFP for broker services.
I have another question.
Now, the follow-up to that is, I said year one, is there the same because, assuming that the cost would be the same for both of the companies. But with a roofed typer, they were going to hold their year two and year three commissions equal to what year one is. For year two and year three, under the other program, it was going to be whatever the commission was for that particular year. We theoretically could go down, we haven't had the insurance go down on the chat, so at least we know what that set is for year two and year three.
And the insurance, who we had to do, did a very fine job.
Yes, they did.
And the conversation was, this is a local company, and I like the last line here in our notes, there is an advantage to having your insurance agent across the street. So that was part of the, in and as well.
Emile, you have an additional question?
He answered it, because I was, well, I can still raise a little bit to be safe that one answer. Now, one company we've been with that for many years, do we have any discounts that we get because of that?
Um, no. The discounts that we get are based upon utilization and also utilization by, they give what they call dividend, and it varies from year to year based upon utilization of not only our utilization, but also the experience from all the municipalities that they have coverage for. But I probably need to be shorter on that.
Additional questions? Insurance brokerage services?
Is there a second on that?
Yes.
And was it easy?
No additional questions? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emile?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes. The next item is the adoption of the legislative priority policy. We did discuss this, and it is the ones that we, was it last year, was that the first year we did this?
2013 it was. So, yeah, this will be the third year.
Okay, all right. So, this, they are in, same, with Kansas, in his full...
League of Kansas municipalities.
League of Kansas municipalities. And so I, if everybody's had a chance to read those, it is a motion that we adopt, please.
Air motion, but I have a second?
Second, please.
Moved in second for the 2015 legislative policy adoption, discussion please?
I guess I have a question maybe for Greg, one may think, since me and this will be the third year doing this, have you gotten direct feedback from legislators from sending this to them?
Yes, I have. Probably helps. And when an issue comes up and we've identified it, I've gotten phone calls from legislators, you know, clarification or more maybe explanation of our position, so that they can understand our position. And if their opinion's in a light of ours, then, you know, use our language to help make their case.
And we did have, was that last year, we had Johnson and Emmerich and, yeah, that 's part. We had a meeting here and helped out people and...
Johnson seems particularly appreciative of such a list.
Yep. And be sure this with the general public, how, I mean, this is a documented...
It gets posted, it gets, well, it gets posted on, as part of our website, knows goes into Facebook. I think last year in February's newsletter, we also had an article about our legislative priorities.
I think it's a valuable document for people to read. Want you to share?
One, I oppose this in committee and will again deny it, just for one reason, and that's item number two, being the Marketplace Fairness Act regarding collection of sales tax through the internet, or sales from out of state. I could change my opinion on that eventually, but as of now, I'm not convinced that this act would treat small businesses in Kansas and in Linsburg fairly. I base that on ignorance, I just don't know enough about the act yet to support it. As we gather more information, I may change my perspective on that, but again, I'm concerned about a burden placed on small business to collect that tax. And that may be addressed in the act, but I just haven't seen that yet.
It's the process that you, it's not so much the collection of the tax and all that, because we do rely heavily on sales tax in this community, and that your concern is the process to a small business owner that deals with 1,500 communities a year or something, and that we can run correctly across the board and not be viable in the future, is that a correct statement?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, that is absolutely correct. I would love to collect sales tax for the city of Linsburg and the county of Woodbridge and County, but we need to be able to do it in a way that's fair, competitive nature, since we compete nationally, that we're able to do that here in Linsburg.
And I did make a comment, Cory, during the committee meeting, that I would follow up to see how it would be administered, collected, because I know in one of the meetings that I attended, they were talking about developing that tax rate database, providing that no charge, but currently as of any language that exists that I found, it doesn't say that, it's going to be one of those bills that will be passed, turned over to some type of, not committee, but, but agency to draft the administrative rules. So, and I had that conversation with Cory and let, to let him know that that particular language, while it was a goal of the committee that was in the process of drafting this particular language, it wasn't necessarily identified within the bill itself.
For those of you that were at the committee, and I think the key is, there are so many taxing entities in the United States, not just at the city level, but even further beyond that, it will require some type of pretty detailed computer program to be able to, to collect and submit that, the proper amount of tax. And that's the biggest concern is how do you, how do you know that you're likely to write about tax? And we're all in, even plain...
Additional questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those saying aye?
Aye.
So, no? Thank you.
I was signing this employee holiday bonus. The past few years, we have given a hundred dollar bonus to all regular and full-time employees, city employees, and as a motion that we do that again.
No, we have thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
I said thirty and it's thirty-one.
Thirty-one.
Is that a motion by a second?
That's correct.
Moved in second, further discussion? For those in the audience, we do vote, roll call, if it involves money, if it doesn't end in money, ordinance, or...
Fair discretion.
Fair discretion? If it doesn't involve those that are traditionally used, it's, we'll use a roll call though. A motion and second on employee's holiday bonus, roll call please?
Becky?
Yes.
Emile?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Becky? Yes.
I think that's it.
Utilities committee?
Utilities committee, ordinance 4898 is dealing with amending the fee schedule for refused rates. And if you're looking at your computer, those things are highlighted and trying to get everything in agreement here and also... highlighted and trying to get everything in agreement here and also with expenses. So, I move that we make the indicated changes.
Second.
And move it seconded to make the indicated changes. You need to indicate what those are indicated on.
Forty-eight ninety-eight. Or forty, yes, almost forty-eight ninety-eight.
So that's forty-eight ninety-eight, please those. Further discussion on ordinance forty-eight ninety-eight? Hearing that, roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emile?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Any others for utilities?
No others.
Also, for the audience, we do, each council member is assigned to two different committees they could serve on, it could be administration and finance, utilities, streets and parks, or public safety, and we hold those meeting, committee meetings during, usually two weeks prior to this council meeting, and then we come here, they vote on it to recommend to council, we come here for further discussion, and final approval is done by the council at that time. Moving on to Streets and Parks Committee.
First item is the Old Mill Bridge Agreement, and I'll let Greg kind of explain us a little bit on what the agreement is.
Well, first, it's regarding the Old Mill Bridge. From the standpoint of the future of it, this agreement would continue to have it as a pedestrian bridge. It defines the respective responsibilities of Woodbridge County and also for the city of Linsburg, but at this time, I would ask you to take no action and table it. We have asked for an amendment to the agreement, have not heard back from the county yet on whether they agree or disagree with that particular amendment, and that's on page one, the last item, number five. And it basically adds a little more clarification on where that responsibility for snow and ice removal would, would end. Haven't heard back from them. I don't expect an issue with it, I mean, it agreed, the language agrees with all we've discussed, but they haven't, from a county commission standpoint, I have not received an answer on one way or another.
If you wish to have this table, we can do that, but we have a, or we have a motion, can we discuss that for a minute? Yes, we can, or no we can?
Motion.
I think you're.
Sorry, I don't have a minute here. Oh, there is one, okay. All right, then we'll discuss.
Okay, moving on.
No action taken on the bridge agreement.
You want to take no action or you want to table it? Because technically, doesn't no action kill it?
Not necessarily, but if you have a motion pending, then you would have to table that.
Okay, okay, thank you.
No, we do. All right, the next item is the sidewalk waiver request. Kind of going around the table here, two fourteen West Normal Drive. You can kind of see on the overhead picture here that there's no sidewalks whatsoever in that entire block. So, I would make a motion that, I'm sorry, make a motion that we approve the sidewalk waiver request.
Add a motion, is there a second?
A second.
Move it seconded for further discussion on the sidewalk waiver request for two fourteen West Normal Drive.
Is it North Normal?
No.
Technically, it's West Normal, even though it turns and goes north and south.
My thing says, doesn't.
Yeah, the property does say north.
But we ask the post office that they close.
Just so long as we all know which property we're talking about, I think it's good.
The property belongs to Herbert Johnson, Jr.
There we go. Further discussion?
My discussion is the same that I have each time this comes up. I think this is a ridiculous rule that we have, we forgive all of them. Only one, in the time that I've been here, have we required to do it, and that gentleman has a sidewalk that goes nowhere. I think it's perfectly reasonable to not have to put one there with nowhere, but if we're going to just go around it for everyone, why have it? I know we'll say, because when we have new development, that it would be a necessity, but they can still.
I'm assuming this is part of the discussion, back on this development was first created.
I don't think any of us were here during.
But still, it says that if they change the footprint of the house or the property there, that they have to put a sidewalk in, of course, not a system.
But if we catch one in the future that does connect off something, then doesn't that make this, or miss, or leaking on books?
Not as far as I'm concerned.
Betty?
Well, I was just going to say, the opposite is true as well, if you have an area where there are sidewalks and a home burns down and someone rebuilds, you would want them to put a sidewalk there. Now, you've got to change footprint, everyone else has a sidewalk, but that person doesn't, and you know that whoever's rebuilding that house isn't going to come to town and say, gee, can I put a sidewalk in, I don't have to. So, I think that's where, I think that's where it's helpful. As silly as the process seems, there's a flip side to that issue.
Okay. Further discussion? merits of the ordinance? Hearing that, all those in favor of sidewalk waiver request for two fourteen West slash North Normal Drive? All of them say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, so noted.
Hey, the next item on the agenda is the sidewalk at Ameriprise. You have a handout in front of you, this will be number one in the handout. For the downtown structures project, naturally, all the sidewalks from downtown will be replaced. And the sidewalk in front of Ameriprise has a heating element in it to melt ice and snow, and a request has been made by Barry McMillan that the city reimburse or actually pay three thousand two hundred eighty-three dollars and twenty-four cents to replace this heating element in front of his business. Part of the discussion on this, for this committee, was to pay fifty percent. The city paid fifty percent, and Barry McMillan paid the other forty percent. Part of the discussion also was that this was not a permitted installment when the sidewalk was put in, you notice the, the brick stamps and the heating element, it was not permitted. So.
But he didn't put it in.
But he, no, he didn't put it in, but it was not permitted.
Permit, not.
And I guess, I'll just kind of give you my two cents worth on this, and I said during this meeting that I don't feel that it should be the burden of the taxpayers of the city of Linsburg even to pay half of it. If a property owner wants to have this in front of their property, then they should pay for it, and not the city. So, do we have a motion before we discuss?
Yeah, let's have a motion. If somebody wishes to make a motion.
Well, the motion would have to be to actually take some kind of an action.
Right.
So, the motion would have to be.
Well, the committee, in the committee, it was, it was pretty soon, right?
So, I, for discussion, I will make the motion that we accept the recommendation of the committee, which is to pay fifty percent of the cost to replace the heating element in front of Ameriprise.
I'll second that for discussion.
In the committee, we discussed this rather length, and as Rick said, the final vote was three to two. I think it's fair to say that some of us thought we were still supporting Barry, and he hadn't, he bought the building with it installed, and this was rather a good faith thing to, to help him do this, and also, he has all the equipment and everything to, to, what do you say, to make it the.
Interoperational.
Yeah, all of that stuff, all he's talking about here are the cables underneath the sidewalk. If somebody else wanted to put something like that in, they'd have a considerable more expense in order to buy the paraphernalia that goes with it.
But what if they wanted to?
What if it says they would pay, yeah, but this also, I think, could be said that it's a one kind of thing, I don't know.
My biggest question here would be, then if I wanted to do something as this, would the city cover half of it if I wanted to?
I think that's a fair question on the north side of my bill.
Furthermore, and nobody ever even asked if any other businesses in town want to do this, even if they covered it completely.
That would be a question I have, are there other improvements to the sidewalks in front of other buildings, not necessarily heating element, but other types of improvements that this could.
Yes, several different businesses have Centicon systems that are drilled into the sidewalk, those are not going to be replaced as part of this project.
Can you?
Centicon systems are the, the termite.
Okay.
Control systems.
They're not going to be replaced.
Jim Turner, not Jim Turner, but.
Not as part of this project. Now, the business owner can put it back in, but.
Okay, good question for point of reference. If you were widening a residential street and you took out a property owner's six ornamental trees, would the city replace those?
That's a tough question to answer. I can tell you, when the water main project that came down Main Street, what year was that, Tim? About how long ago?
Ninety-five or something like that.
At that time, the decision was made, instead of taking out the trees, to tear up the sidewalk, put the water main under the sidewalk, isn't that correct?
Yes.
And run the water main under the sidewalk, and replace the sidewalk.
Okay, so we don't have a historical comparison of any kind?
Well, you get to know, I mean, you discuss underground sprinkler systems.
Oh, underground sprinkler systems, if, I mean, if there's a sprinkler system within the right of way, and a permit hasn't got to put it in the right way, and we're not aware of it, and we damaged the system, we don't go back in and repair it.
But if it were permitted, you would be, because you gave permission, you would be there?
No, we give them notice.
We give them notice.
They're coming through, and they have the option of moving it while we come through.
This sidewalk is an easement that is property, or is actually owned by the city.
Part of the public right of way, it's owned by the city, but it's, there are certain requirements on property owners, like for tree maintenance and such, on some property that they have within the easement. I can tell you from the state statute standpoint, the responsibility of sidewalk maintenance, et cetera, is on the abiding property owner and not on the general look at large. And there's not only statute, but case law that supports that.
Would this sidewalk be stamped?
No. No, it would be uniform with the rest of the sidewalks.
Which it's not now.
That is correct.
So, the issue here is, are we going to say that the city as a whole is going to pay for half?
One thousand six hundred forty-one sixty-two is the number.
Of something that was never permitted in the first place.
Correct.
But it is.
The owner of the building, we get the owner purchasing it, they have it as part of this business.
Right.
I mean.
Maybe you should sue the person who sold it.
Well, that's, that's not my point, but.
Will you have a discussion in the back if you don't mind letting Mr. Dunn?
We've made reference that it's not permitted, we don't normally permit sidewalks, that wasn't done with my knowledge. They did not put that in just arbitrarily, I was aware of it, because we didn't have anything that said they couldn't.
That is my question, there isn't any ordinance or anything that says you're not allowed to do this. If I wanted to do one today, I could do it.
It would be my issue.
Would there be a permit required if I wanted to do it?
We've historically not done that yet. That's not to say it's anything else that you're talking about, but.
Right.
We did have knowledge that they were doing it, and I had an issue with it.
Another question? Is it Tim, can I ask?
You have to mention that, Tim.
Okay, so routinely, if someone is doing something on their property, or their house or whatever, and it's going to involve changing the electric or changing the plumbing or anything like that, would that not require them to have a permit?
Yes, electric, plumbing, structural.
Okay, so if that's the case, then does not an underground thing to melt the ice, is that not an electric or a plumbing or a something?
They were renovating the entire building at the time, and the electric was covered under the electrical inspection in the building.
Okay, but if, but if I had my own little building, I wanted, I was not doing anything inside my building, but I wanted to do this outside?
Yes, there would be an electrical inspection.
So, that would require them to come and get a permit?
Yeah, but.
Okay.
One size fits all, if you have electric, I do all of the electric.
Okay. All right, just wanted to be clear.
Another part of this would be, if this was approved, if it was put back in, there's going to have to be some type of agreement that any future repairs or anything would be solely on the property owner, regardless if it's Mr. McMillan or thirty years down the road, some other business owner.
And I don't think that says that here, but.
Well, yeah, it says additionally, agreement will be drafted in the future, any future infrastructure repairs in the public right of way, the damage to the private snow melt system located in the public right of way be borne entirely by the abiding property owner.
Correct.
Hopefully also address changing the texture surface of the sidewalk, so there's a uniform appearance.
I think, yeah, I think you're going in the right direction, I think there needs to be some kind of ordinance or something to.
No, I'm saying, that's, that's going to sort of deal with this issue, that is.
Is it, is it fair to ask hypothetical questions when we're discussing this? No?
Yes.
Say, we say, no, you know, tough luck, sorry. And next year, we're just, you know, with all the snow and ice, and someone injures their back pretty seriously, shoveling ice and removing snow. I'll be in line for liability because we removed the, no.
Additional questions?
Does a system like this positively impact the value of the building, making it more attractive to sell?
I would think so.
Yeah, this pays the cost of putting a whole system, about ten thousand dollars, didn't? But I think so. Well, the hard part to answer your question is, does, does it equate to a dollar for dollar, does a dollar of investment in that system equate to at least a minimum of a dollar of increased value? That's a question we can't. That's a question we can't answer. I mean, because that's just a, I mean, the sale price is a market driven value, not a cost based value.
So the thirty-two eighty-three twenty-four is what it would cost to replace the cabling or whatever is under the sidewalk? And that would be given to the contractor? They'd put it in while our contractors were pouring the sidewalk?
Yeah, it'd have to be coordinated between the general contractor on the downtown project and contractor to install it. I can tell you this much, that when we first looked at this issue earlier this year, the price that is quoted for the system is not aligned. And in fact, just for the cabling itself, if we're going to apply it directly ourselves, would be about six hundred dollars more than what the total installation cost would be.
Do you have the sidewalks in front of the building?
We just have it on the ADA ramp and the landing right near the front. It's expensive stuff. Yeah, we looked at it.
At the north side.
And doing the north side of the building because it, yeah, it never melts and I think it was in excess of twenty-five thousand dollars. And this was not the whole stretch. This was just the length of the building. Well, that's why I asked. I didn't know if it was, if we had a butter adjoining it. No, no.
Well, I have a question now. Let's say we say no to this. We're not going to help you out with it. Would we still be able to allow him to pay the full portion himself and have it done by our contractor? And if we did allow that, wouldn't that open us up to having to allow anyone else that wanted to pour paint? At the same time, this construction with other businesses?
Well, you have that already if these people with the termite things are going to perhaps put them back in. And that would have to be coordinated.
No, no, because they can do that after effect. They're drawing holes, that's really easy. And this town, you have to do a lot of that concrete before. So I mean, would that...
But if it's going to happen, this is going to have to bear the expense of going back and doing it again? And going to pay for it one time?
If he does it like this right now, he doesn't have to have the concrete ripped up and stuff cut down, it's going to save him, I don't know.
You're talking about Centricon, right?
I'm talking about Centricon.
Oh, I'm talking about the...
Well, they are going to rip off the concrete.
How many properties are there now?
Put a new sidewalk?
Yes, but what I'm saying is that they put the new sidewalk in and then you haven't had it done later, they have to rip it up again. Or like if somebody else wants it done, they have to rip it up.
Yeah. Let's hear us the question.
There, there's so many different angles of it.
The question is, would we allow somebody else? If Becky or somebody decided she wanted to put in an electrical front of her building, would we allow her at her own cost to work with our contractor to put the wires in the, in the D R?
Absolutely not.
Well, in turn, I mean, it's going to, it's going to cause a contractor issue because it is.
Well, I, I would, I would answer the question this way. We have nothing in our, in our code that we're benched at. But I would also come to you and ask for, if there's an incremental increase in the cost of the overall project because of the extraordinary coordination between our general contractor and the contracts for building owners, that not only the cost of that snowmelt system plus, but also the incremental cost on the general contractor that we would bear because it would be a non-participated cost, that that be able to be passed on to that particular property, not business owner, property owner?
That, that was part of my initial thing was if we decide not to help him with this, are we still going to allow him to coordinate with our contractor anyway?
Well, he still has contract or coordinated through us. We're not going to have him work directly with our contractor.
Okay, well, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
You know, I mean, are we still going to allow him to do this?
That's what I'm asking. Do they know what's the...
Yeah, this was already identified.
This was identified.
As an issue with the project.
I actually think that a big part of...
Thank you all.
A big part of my concern right now is that I, if there are a half dozen people that have some projects in there and they already, they simply have them drilled and put in, or we helping out one property owner with something that was there and then we're taking away, we're taking away things from eight to ten different property owners, you either help all of them, somebody, or you help none of them. And unfortunately, or fortunately, I don't know. Unfortunately, for the owner of the Ameriprise building, he's affected somewhat more severely than someone that has a half a dozen Centricon units plugged in the concrete. But I, I don't see what would want to not help anybody because there's a loss represented by everybody when we take out all... That's, that's kind of where I'm, that is...
Well, I would agree. I mean, if you're returning things to existing conditions for one and not the other, there's something wrong there. I, does anybody know an idea of what it costs for the Centricon replacement? I mean, they drill so many holes, how are they...
You know, the armies installed. I mean, they even do it, it's there.
Additional questions or do you have a motion on the floor? Additional thoughts? All right.
Should we create the question, please? Another motion?
Your motion was to accept the recommendation of the committee.
Thank you.
And again, that cost is one thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-two cents. That's fifty percent of thirty-two eighty-three twenty-four with an agreement stipulation that Greg read. Do you need a little call? Roll call, please.
Are you ready for a roll call?
I think, one last chance, discussion. Roll call, please.
All right. Becky?
No.
Emo?
No.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
No.
Rick?
No.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
No.
Kelly?
No.
One, two, three, four, five, six, no votes, two yes votes.
All right. Thank you for the discussion.
Uh, fourth item is proposed changes to the case of the contract?
Well, it would be to the construction.
Correct.
Change orders.
There you go.
Yes.
And I think you were going to check and see if there could be how much money may be involved on some of these change orders or is that a later day?
That would be a later day.
The first item on that is Gal Tire and Auto West driveway. You want to address this one, Greg?
The west driveway, which is a driveway closest to the alley on Lincoln Street, was scheduled to be, to be removed and then replaced with sidewalk as part of the project. And speaking with the business owner, they do use that driveway as, for, to get RVs through also when they have a wrecker service truck. And they have to pull a vehicle through. It allows a pull-through bay, a pull-through bay which they don't have in any other location. This was brought to the committee and the committee is recommending that, that it be remain a driveway.
I'll make a motion here. I'll make a motion to approve that change.
Second. Been moved in second to allow that driveway to stay. All right, come back as a driveway. Further discussion?
Yeah, I guess I have a question about this part. It says the committee was informed that the practice violates city code and that the city staff will be visiting with the owner. What, the committee was informed that the practice violates city code. Can you explain that?
Sure, it, it ties into the sentence before that. The committee was unwilling to change if the plan was to continue to sell a, to continue to sell used cars in the public right of way. In a lot, that particular comment. That, and to that is a violation of city code.
So, two different people.
Yes, that is correct.
So the recommendation as a caveat, is that what we're...
Well, the recommendation, the committee was...
Expressing?
Their, their sentiment. The individual that's selling the car in the public right of way is going to be informed that that practice is not going to continue.
So how many driveways probably are along that?
Three.
Well, he said three and he said two.
It's three, third row.
Oh, I'm sorry, I always think of you as the... Which takes out how many parking places?
Off that way, I could do it.
No more than our network. I will say this since I was informed last year or so that that would likely go away, that one drive would. Here recently, we ordered a new piece of equipment that will more than likely block that door and not allow pull-through access at all on a city.
So this is a move?
So it's a non-issue?
It wouldn't be bad if you had a driveway there, but it'd be just the same as a parking spot as far as I'm concerned.
But if this new equipment's put in, then this driveway would go nowhere?
Exactly, not into the building. It would not physically be able to enter the building with a vehicle from the north in that particular area.
And why do you understand that if, when the plans and estimates are included, that the sidewalk and not driveway, that the cost of the driveway could be assessed to the building owner if they were resistant to the remain driveway?
No, the incremental cost is insignificant. I mean, it's all going to go back concrete, one way or the other. Just one has a slope, one has a curve. And plus you'd have the additional cost of curb and gutter.
I see.
Yeah, so.
Well, then the result of this is if we both know, that won't be a bad thing for your business.
They would want to affect anything other than one less parking spot. That's the negative, it'd be less parking because I believe if we don't put that there, it's going to be curb and gutter, so you can't park anything there.
They would, they go parking?
My understanding from looking at the drawings was that there would be no parking up there. It's just going to be like shrubs.
It could be a safety issue.
Yeah, because that, that driveway is extremely close to the...
Oh, yeah.
All the shrubs, is that all going away?
That all goes away, yes.
Concrete, the whole...
I just know that there was no parking there in the drawing.
But that doesn't identify the parking. It's not part of the overall...
I guess you're right because the parking doesn't go in there, it goes out there. So if you want, not parking there.
But I could imagine one of them was still going in.
All right, so...
So we can vote this down and you'd still be happy?
I'm more indecisive than any of them. I can tell you the property owner would like for it to stay.
That he'd like to sell, but we did post there too.
Yes, but I do believe he's not planning on doing that anymore.
All right, so the motion is to recommend change of the plans.
That the driveway be reconstructed as part of the project. Currently under the plans, it is to go back as sidewalk and curb and gutter.
And have two driveways at that point. It's either goes into your oil tending bay and then that one north scissorswood bay.
I mean, I'm just trying to get on this stuff because truthfully, I probably feel like I shouldn't stand for this.
So the original, I really understand, the original plan, they would not put a driveway there. After discussion in committee on item B, the committee voted to put a driveway there, ask council to do that. With the enlightenment of night of what the possibilities are of a driveway to nowhere, it's, it's your vote at that point. And the motion on the floor was to allow a driveway there. Everybody understands that? I'm ready to call for a roll call unless there's further discussion or clarity needed on this.
We're voting for no driveway. We're voting for a driveway.
You're voting for a driveway in, your yes vote, your yes vote is not like putting fluoride in the water. Your yes vote, let's put a driveway in. No vote, please, it has been a plan with no driveway. I just clarified.
Are we ready?
Um, I will say one other thing though. I am a renter, so if anything ever did happen and somebody wanted to use that northern door as a drive-through bay, they'd have a door leading to nothing instead of driveway leading to nothing.
So it was a bad school for it.
Vibration. Roll call, please.
Okay. Becky?
No.
Emo?
Your blue hood's staying, I assume?
I'm staying.
Don't want to put a boot in your mouth. Dave?
No.
Corey?
No.
Rick?
No.
Blaine?
No.
Betty?
No.
Kelly?
No.
And we don't have to do anything else to be sure you have the vacuum that we don't want a car locked in?
No.
No.
No, seven.
Okay, next item, or you can move on there. Uh, Mountain Clear Water driveway. Okay, the driveway there on the south side of Mountain Clear Water is scheduled to be removed and replaced with curb and gutter. The owner of the business has requested driveway be left in place. I'll make a move.
Does everybody know we're talking about Mountain Clear? Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, great, straight there.
Gal making motion to leave the existing driveway on the south of Mountain Clear Water.
Second. Moving second. Discussion.
I don't, I don't understand how a driveway makes it safer and more accessible when you're talking about there being this slope and when it's icy or snowy, you're having, you're talking about how you have to walk up a slope instead of getting out of your car and walking down that surface and then a bunch of curb and walking into the building.
As I understood, I think it was getting the vehicles off.
Off the street.
Getting it up closer. So that you wouldn't have people, excuse me, carrying five, ten gallon jugs of water across and down a curb and gutter and trying to put it in their vehicle versus being able to pull up close to the...
I think also you talked about backing in and out of the tram service. It's a change to your...
And personally, I'd use it. I use that drive back.
Just as an FYI, I guess the only thing on Grand Street from the back of the sidewalk that direction was this. So what you'll do basically, if we, if you vote to approve this, the existing driveway would stay, new sidewalk would cross in front going south to the curb, you know, together with the new handicap ramps and that. There was no other amenities planned beyond putting up curb and gutter.
And basically it'll just stay as is.
Further discussion on Mountain Clear Water driveway?
So if I say yes, is that means that this doesn't alter the plan at all? It does alter the plan because we're trying to do the driveway out.
I think what it means is it currently exists.
Yeah, I'm sorry. But it is a statement to the project. You don't think we'll not have to do the work in the driveway.
So once again, this motion is to keep the driveway?
The motion is the current plans indicate taking the driveway out. This motion is to say, no, we're going to change that and leave the driveway in. So a yes vote leaves the driveway there and then Greg and then we'll figure out from a change order that the construction company always changes it down there. Any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Becky? Yes, okay. Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Corey?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Right, next item, Main and Lincoln intersection, double flags. I think this was actually the mayor requested this in.
No. Thanks for taking it, no.
I do.
Well, then I'll let you speak to it.
At the intersection of Main and Lincoln, each of those corners will have a double luminaire pole, they will also have street signs on two of those poles, and additionally, they will have stop signs. Stop sign height to six feet, the flag standard height to six feet. Actually, my request was that those flags be removed altogether because I felt it made it too busy and it became a bit of a public safety issue. Upon committee discussion, they felt that the flags were important, create sense of motion activity draws attention to the intersection, and instead of leaving them at six foot, the motion was to raise, to see if we could raise the flag standards 12 inches so that they would be at seven feet, which would require a change order because these are custom manufactured poles.
Well, the flag will all the time, it will be a problem.
How long will the flag hold, be that be the other question, and how big will the flag be, that'd be another question.
It'll be five, you can get them in sizes of flags.
What are they, three by five or?
Four by six, two by five.
I think they're three by five.
What are we talking about?
What are the flag adequate, adequate? Well, I think they can hang down, block the stop sign, they just have to lose my services.
That was the question I had too, the currently used flag hangs down right in the, we could have the handicap ramp in there.
Here's because we have an anticipation, let's not mind the flag, let's just.
The other question, I don't know if we have a determination on that, if they could be flown all the time with enough light to meet adequate standards? Do you have a?
I don't have the time to get that question answered yet.
See, are the flags under the, I mean, are they under the street light that are the other, under the sidewalk light?
Well, I'm wondering, there's a sidewalk ahead. There's not a sidewalk, there's no sidewalk light.
So, the light is a hit above the.
It's 18 feet, the double lumaires would be 18 feet.
Because of the additional height, and that concern was having to ask the person that does the flags coming down, reaching that.
Do we have any idea of the cost really incurred for the change order to move it?
It hasn't been manufactured yet, nothing. It's been manufactured, we're ready to change it. They're like $14,000 to pull there. But they have a bit there. Nothing I'm aware of.
Motion is to bring up the standards.
There, there's a motion. Or just have a discussion about the height, potential of a motion.
Anyway, I guess I'll make a motion and we raise the flag standards 12 inches. Saying so, sharing.
Is it breathing?
Yes. I understand the motion correctly is to leave them at two flags, but raise them 12 inches.
Correct, correct.
Do, do we, should we know 12 inches is the ideal height to raise them, or do we want to make the motion a little more vague or accommodating? I mean, 12 inches doesn't seem like a lot, you're talking about four by six.
She can't go eight feet because that's where the street sign is.
Since the stop sign will be there, are there any KDOT or other types of regulations or rules that apply to that?
The stop sign would be before the flag sign.
Oh, before the sidewalk.
Before the sidewalk.
On its own.
Then if there was, then they would have approved it.
They'd have to know right away.
Yes.
It's just, see United States flag, it would work, it would be putting up or?
Could be any number of flags.
We're not.
It could be that big.
It's specified. You said flag, I didn't know.
I think the flags traditionally see here are the Swedish flag.
Burger, do you think it causes an issue?
Yes, but.
What is the issue?
What vision?
Do you think it's going to cause an issue just being four inches wide or two?
No more than they were meant.
It's the same thing, just a foot, pretty much.
Well, and they're going to be flags that are going to be the right sun, they're not just going to be what we've got and caused.
Correct.
So. The motion, the motion, the movement of the flags create, I think, are important. I think it, except this is our size where this is where it all happens.
I'll just get you to tell my flag story. Here's my flag story that I think we should do at that corner, this is the main, then I will take credit for throwing this on the table, but you know, I said it was like crickets in the room. I think it's coming out, so. Here's my theory, that corner, there ought to be a large flag pole behind, you know, you have the flag in the corner, you have the crosswalk, and then put a 25 foot flag pole each corner. And the flags are flown in front of City Hall, the splinter board, you know, and then you have in front of Sunstrom's the Swedish flag, over here you've got the American flag and the Kansas flag in front of it. And they're backlit from the double head pole and they're flown 24 hours a day, you know, they could be, yeah, farthest, have their three poles on their building or anything else, and it creates a flag corner, you know, you could have them.
There are four flags in four of your corners? So, then when you're seeing the Swedish national, I think.
One flag.
One flag?
One flag, there's one flag.
Oh, okay, right.
Flying up, the blue flag.
No, that, that, no, that's right, that's exactly what you would do. And it'd be kind of funny.
Well, it's, it's health and wellness. I appreciate the fact there are no crickets, now we have dogs. Now it's going to look every other year, Dylan's best, when you say the, the flag relations are extended and that, but I guess my theory was it creates a corner with flag movements and all that, it gets them up a little higher and makes that effect, so.
Firstly, I don't think that it's as good as two flags for each one, and I think it's still.
No, with all my thoughts.
Boy, you gotta beat someone up fast.
Wait a minute, you have a tissue? Well, that's why you put things out there and you let people think about it and give them.
Well, I'm just watching people on those, on those bleachers doing that four point turn.
All you think of the YouTube action, you could have.
Bailey just had a great idea about how we can rotate around the dance circle.
Oh, no, you, you have the dance circle that's already painted on the intersection. I think with part of the infrastructure process, you just build a hydraulic and lift it and the whole dance circle is moving, everybody there. There we go.
Sweet and twit all the time. All right.
So, we have a staff recommendation, that could be a safety issue, but at the same time, we have a recommendation from what about moving them, from the committee, about moving them 12 inches.
Raising them.
Raising them 12 inches.
But you also have a motion to raise them 12 inches. A motion to the second, raise flag standard.
And the original discussion was to eliminate one flag, just one flag from you, wasn't that correct, Greg?
Eliminate it all together.
Oh.
Well, my, my thing was, was it seems like on here that because staff said it could be a safety issue, we decided we're going to try to raise them 12 inches, but when I asked Bergerin if 12 inches was going to help, he said it's still an issue, a safety issue.
But now, maybe it lies upon the size of the flag, yeah, unless the flag down from the ground to that, to your 12 inches.
That'd be eight.
Eight feet?
Seven feet.
I thought it was eight feet.
Seven feet to the base of the light pole, right? If it's seven feet to the base of the flag pole that connects to the light pole, so the flag would be above that.
If I'm stopped at the intersection, I don't think I could see that, that, or if I'm at the intersection. I can see it as I'm approaching, but as I'm sitting there, unless I'm in a convertible?
I was, I was trying to figure out how far down the flag would actually hang, but the problem with it is that it all depend on how far it is and what angle it's coming on. I mean, if it's coming off at an angle like that, it's going to hang two feet from the ground.
You thought my story was funny, you know? See, this conversation, so.
That goes quick. Thanks for the signal.
This, this is a common card.
Oh, it is, it is, so, yeah. All right, I think we have on the floor, we have motion to raise the flags by 12 inches. Let's get this question out there. This resolved.
So, are you going to explain the whole, if you vote yes, it means this, and if you vote no?
If you go yes, we will raise the flags 12 inches. If you go no, the flags will remain where they are at six foot, with the option to, I should bring out another motion if you want to discuss it again.
I just can't wait for that.
You've all heard the concerns of those in the crowd? And again? All those in favor of the motion as presented to raise the flag standards 12 inches, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Aye.
Aye.
So, noted. Of course, the big caveat, they already built, I don't know, kind of, many, many states. Many, I've got 20, I don't know.
They always worry about these things.
Aren't we glad to hear this level of recognition? All right. Rick, any other?
I certainly don't know.
Moving on to public safety.
Ordinance number 4899, there's a correction that's actually, there are grammatical or somewhat a minor change, but it's issued to the standard, from the standard traffic ordinance writing people.
So, that motion to?
Your motion is to adopt the revised standard traffic ordinance correction, which is ordinance number 4899.
We have a motion, is there a second? Discussion, very done, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same time?
If there's more, also more units.
Pro call.
Let's see if the mayor, I see if the.
Does that mean you're ready for that?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
Any others for public safety?
The only other I'd like to say is thank you to the mayor for contacting Representative Jared Moran regarding the post office and getting that in from Senator, sorry, Senator Perry Grant and answering those concerns and constituents brought forward, thank you.
In light of emails, full and honest disclosure, I didn't do it. I got the email back, but I didn't do it.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, somebody in our community that, looking at the camera.
Okay. All right.
I appreciate it, it's interesting, I will say.
Thank you.
I have not heard any more than what's in the letter, copy table talk, so. Ordinance, I'm sorry, item number 10, consideration purchase ordinance, 4900?
Number nine, there's Bill.
4900, number nine?
Number nine, yes.
Old number nine? All those in, oh, I'm sorry, roll call, please.
Kelly?
Betty? Yes. Blaine?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Emo? Yes. Kelly?
Item number 10, consideration payroll ordinance, 4896 and 4897, what did you desire?
With approval, okay.
Second.
Moving second, any discussion?
Wow, who made the motion?
Betty and then Rick. Roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Emo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Blaine?
Yes.
Kelly? Yes.
Item number 11, any other others for the?
I have one.
Thank you.
That is, I think we should recognize the fact that the CPB and other cooperating city entities had a bang-up thing this last weekend and, and lots of good, great public city infrastructure and was really well received by everyone, I suppose. Thank you.
Senator, something about that.
All right, any other others?
Just a reminder, the Christmas dinner begins at 6:30 at the Sunstrom.
That's your second reminder today, so I hope everybody will read it on time.
I just have the time, you're just.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for bringing forth, giving Tuesday, is that what you said?
Giving Tuesday.
Giving Tuesday, keep in mind, Tuesday is tomorrow, so. Please do. Motion to adjourn, go move. Any discussion on a motion to adjourn? And all the papers say aye? All the same time, thank you all very much. Again, thank you in advance of.